We now have public comment. Thank you, Robin. We have Mark Goldner. Yes, Mark, you're up. Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
So my name is Mark Goldner. I've been teaching for 27 years. The last 18 years, I've been teaching at the Heath School. I teach science. I'm also the co-chair of the BEU Grievance Committee. Speaking tonight to highlight the grievance process and what feels like an effort on the central administration to work against the union rather than to see us as partners in resolving differences concerning violations of the contract or policy as they arise. Grievance is a strange word, but the idea behind the process is not intended to be adversarial. Grievances are intended to resolve conflicts, to give employees the right to have their say in front of management with union backing and with the union as an equal partner with management. I've served in the Grievance Committee under four different superintendents and interim superintendents. Under previous administrations, the union felt that while we would often disagree over issues we were raising, the administration treated us as equals and made a good faith effort to resolve the conflicts through thoughtful compromise and creative problem solving. This year, things are different. Nothing makes that more clear than the fact that this year alone, eight grievances have moved to Level III, the school committee level. In the past, it was quite rare for a grievance to make it to this level because the administration recognized that it had the responsibility to work hard in collaboration with the union to resolve the conflict before it got to the school committee. Further, in three cases over the past year, the superintendent's lack of willingness to have an open dialogue with the union has resulted in unfair labor charges being filed with the Department of Labor Relations. The conduct of the central administration makes it clear that they see the union as an adversary. We have been told directly by central administrators that they think our grievances are frivolous or overreaching. This reveals that the central administration believes that the union is not acting in good faith. This is alarming. Further evidence of the adversarial attitude towards the union comes from the way the central administration communicates with us. Communication from the fifth floor is regularly late, sloppy, or nonexistent. Several times, their sloppiness has resulted in messages that are the exact opposite of what administrators apparently meant to say. This is not only frustrating. Such unprofessionalism communicates a clear lack of respect for the role of the union. And some of our grievances have been elevated to Level III simply because we just never received a response from the administration. Each time we come to the determination that an issue warrants the time and energy to file a grievance, it is because we believe the integrity of the collectively bargained contract has been eroded in some way. This is a very time-consuming process for us as educators. Why would we want to waste our time writing and presenting grievances if we, as a union, did not feel that these were important contractual violations? Tonight, members of the public had to wait well over an hour for the public meeting to start to make room for Level III hearings, a situation made necessary because of the stonewalling we have described. Both issues we addressed in executive session tonight could have been and should have been resolved by the administration. But really, who suffers the most? The children of Brookline, whose teachers are more demoralized, more vulnerable, more anxious, and less able to effectively teach them. I implore you, as school committee members, to look into this treatment of the union by the central administration and make it your priority to correct it. The children of Brookline, as well as their teachers, deserve better from our administration. Thank you.
All right, we have Olivia Ray.
I am.
Ray.
I have nothing prepared, and later I will be very agreed. I'm just talking about parking at Driscoll. And I will also be brief because my husband would be horrified to know that I'm up here. He's a huge bicycle and pedestrian advocate and can't stand cars. And actually, I live in Brookline, and he fantasizes about creating an art cart. I'm an art teacher, and that I would bike. I teach it through -- I'm just sharing my story. I teach at three schools. And I teach Driscoll, where there's currently some parking. I'm half a block away from the building in the morning. I teach at Runcle, where there's no parking lot parking. I'm two blocks away. That's not so bad, not a very dense neighborhood. I'm also at Lawrence. I'm three-tenths of a mile away from the building, which often means pulling up, running into the building, dropping off my stuff, running to my car, driving three-tenths a mile, running back. But also the element of being in three schools and the prep that I'm doing when I arrive at a school and just trying to eliminate some of that stress, the timing pieces, is very important. So I know that parking is small with all the issues that are going on in Brookline right now, but I just wanted to share that one piece as a traveling teacher at different schools.
Thank you. And also, thank you very much for taking the time to come and wait through the executive session. So I know you were here at 6:00, and we appreciate your -- oh, thank you. That's all of the members we have signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak during public comment portion? All right, now we have discussion, an overview and discussion of the Brookline Fiscal Advisory Committee recommendations. And we have some members of the BFAC Committee. We want to thank you. We know that you have also come to our finance subcommittee meetings, the select board meeting, and we appreciate all of the time and work that's going into it. We did have a discussion earlier today at Town School Partnership Meeting about the recommendations that were made in the BFAC report, and we appreciate all of the energy that's gone to this point and your willingness to come here today to talk about the recommendations. And we will try very hard not to duplicate too much of what you've already discussed, but we did have some more questions.
All right, so I was a member, the school committee liaison to the Brookline Fiscal Advisory Committee, which recently submitted its final report with the unanimous support of its 11-member committee. And this presentation is going to focus on BFAC's findings and recommendations that impact the school department. BFAC had certain charge restraints, essentially to look at the budget situation from more of a philosophical perspective, to identify broad challenges rather than identifying specific cost-reduction opportunities or specific recommendations. BFAC wants to implement a certain set of procedures and methodologies of analysis rather than trying to make specific recommendations that would be the purview of different boards. BFAC did find that the status quo is unacceptable. The town of Brookline faces significant financial challenges. Expense growth unsustainably exceeds revenues. Planned and recently commenced capital projects raise our projected outstanding debt by $550 to $700 million, requiring additional debt exclusions. The rainy day reserve fund is more than $4 million below the amount required by the town's own policies. Economic pressures imperil our AAA bond rating, which reflects our overall financial strength and allows us to borrow at lower interest rates. Over here, you see four different charts that relate to the AAA rating, financial analysis, forecasting, and planning. Mr. Rudolph, who's a town meeting member and had did a lot of work on the importance of the AAA rating, I'll invite you to come and speak about that and why the AAA rating's important.
Hey, everybody. How are you? First off, we didn't set up a big, we didn't get together beforehand and say what we were going to talk through tonight, so there's going to be a little bit of ad hoc here. But just to talk a little bit about the AAA rating and certainly to see if anybody had any questions in this space, the chart that's in the upper right-hand corner, I think, is sort of the easiest one to really wrap your head around as far as when everybody talks about Brookline's rating, and David said it very succinctly, you know, when we have, there are many different levels of Moody's ratings that start at AAA and go all the way down to the BAA level that you can see. Every time a town goes down a step, anytime we want to borrow money, we have to spend more money to borrow that money. And as you all know, we're in the business of borrowing a lot of money recently. In the last couple of years, we've gone from somewhere in the $40 million range of what we're borrowing up to half a billion dollars as we continue to do debt exclusions, to purchase or plan to build new schools. If all of the lines on that upper right-hand chart were green, that would say that of all the categories that Moody's looks at for us, they're all stellar. As you can see, there's quite a few of them that are not. And essentially, based on the location of where we are and the property values of our town, that's what's really keeping us in the green at the top there. So going forward, as part of BFAC, we study all of the other areas and can identify some of the places where we really need to focus on what we're going to do. If some of those orange bars turn red, certainly the green ones are not at risk for moving. You know, we could be downgraded in our rating. That would mean that we'd have to spend more money to borrow more money, and that would probably start to really make an impact on what we could do when we start to do debt exclusions and other overrides and that sort of thing. So I don't really have a whole lot of other information. I don't know if Carol or Peter, you wanted to speak to the Moody's rating piece, or if you want to switch back to David to go to the next couple of slides, but happy to answer any questions that you have on this. Thank you.
Now, BFAC identified 18 specific general recommendations, many with additional sub-recommendations. BFAC's recommendations were grouped into four general categories: maintenance of our AAA bond rating, improving financial decision-making, recognizing how we are overstretching the capabilities of the town's current governance model, and identifying resources to implement BFAC's recommendations. BFAC recommendations included four areas of improvement: data collection, financial analysis, financial forecasting, and financial planning. The BFAC recommendations involving the schools are in 10 of the 18 total BFAC recommendations. There is no recommendation that holds the school committee solely responsible for implementation. The first BFAC recommendation: The select board and the school committee should have their administrators adopt common financial policies to the extent possible and create and institute performance management metrics to allow for better evaluation of budgetary decisions and to lessen the influence of anecdotal statements and special interests in financial decisions. Why we need financial integration: The town and schools have separate, parallel budget processes, each with very different challenges and subject to different state and federal requirements, but ultimately both need to comply with certain regulatory, accounting, and reporting standards. Adopting integrated financial policies will allow for the evaluation of stated priorities and goals so that resources can be redeployed as necessary in the context of a forward-thinking financial culture. Performance management metrics will strengthen data-driven decision-making while weakening the argument for decisions disassociated from financial constraints. This is necessary because of the town's finite resources. Performance metrics are increasingly used as part of best practices in municipal operations, with many examples in greater Boston. The second BFAC recommendation is to adopt a financial review and budget process, requiring periodic summits between the select board, the school committee, and the advisory committee. The reason why summits are important is because it provides an opportunity for the town side, the school side, and all stakeholders to essentially get together, have an understanding of the priorities of each group, and to work together in an efficient manner to identify the best approach to move forward. These meetings should include monitoring key financial trends beyond one-year horizons, key strategic decisions across boards and committees, and deep dives on strategic topics. BFAC recommendation number six is to evaluate key programs and services on a periodic basis to assess their effectiveness and completion of objectives in order to identify potential cost savings and opportunities for the redeployment of resources. Pilot test zero-based budgeting best practices into the annual budget process. The periodic evaluation of programs: Objective measures by which to judge progress toward goals present a key component to expenditure review. Too often, these evaluations can become arguments based on opinion rather than evidence. If a program has been reviewed and not lived up to expectations, there needs objective criteria for evaluating the consequences of ending or tailoring back the investment in the program. This recommendation is intended to foster evidence-based decision-making, where more facts and evidence are provided to support decisions by staff, boards, committees, and town meeting. It should also help decision-makers explain their decisions more transparently. BFAC recommendation 6.1 is to require an investment analysis. In addition to demonstrating the possible benefit, there should be an explanation of the goals of the investment, the metrics by which it will be judged, and the timeframe over which the metrics will be analyzed. Periodic look-backs to ascertain effectiveness should be required, as there should never be an assumption that any program will continue indefinitely. It's important to create rubrics and metrics for establishing spending and investment priorities. Regular procedures should be instituted to periodically evaluate programs for their effectiveness and identify service levels in excess of statutory requirements. This will create opportunities to rethink the deployment of limited financial resources. BFAC recommendation 6.3: Pilot test zero-based budgeting and outcome-based budgeting as alternatives to the current incremental annual budget process. Both of these budget approaches offer the potential for a more strategic allocation of resources. In ZBB, the budget for a program is reset to zero, and the resources to provide a service or complete a goal are identified and costed out. In OBB, the focus is the alignment of resources with results. BFAC recommendation number eight, and this is a very critical one for schools, which is the Town School Partnership. BFAC recommends revisiting the structure, including the revenue allocation formula that forms the Town School Partnership, to ensure both that it is better understood and that it best meets the needs of the town and schools in a dynamic manner. An extra note on the Town School Partnership is that it's currently based on a two-page memorandum from the early 1990s. And so without having detailed information as to how it works, there is a perception, which is frankly a reality, that it's difficult to tell exactly how fund is going to be allocated between the two, which is why it's very important to try to memorialize the agreement in a more permanent way that works for all stakeholders. Most municipalities maintain some kind of mechanism for revenue allocation between the school side of the ledger and the general government side of the ledger. After meeting with staff, BFAC encourages them to focus on a redesign that considers and or reflects on the following: Create a Town School manual that allows current and future employees to understand how the Town School Partnership works. Eliminate the misperception that the partnership reflects a 50-50 split of revenue. Utilize fully allocated costs and show them so that everyone can see and understand them. Consider eliminating the focus on marginal revenue and instead use total revenue. Make sure that costs allocated to the schools conform with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requirements. Agree on how to incorporate changes in student enrollment. Agree on how to deal with special education costs, taking into account whether any such costs are embedded in the formula for changes in student enrollment. Consider whether the establishment of a reserve for unanticipated special education costs is needed and/or appropriate. Determine the appropriate revenue split, but recognize that certain functions are performed by the town on behalf of the schools and that the funds for those services must be available to the town. This would be accomplished by making sure those costs are considered shared costs that are deducted prior to any split. Meetings among senior staff on the town and school sides are already underway to address the Town School Partnership. BFAC recommendation number nine is to create an enhanced capital planning process covering the town and schools. And to address this broader issue of capital investments, I'm going to ask Ms. Levin and Mr. Blay Levin to come up and discuss this.
Good evening. I'm probably the least known person in this room. My name is Peter Blay Levin. I've been living in Chesnut Hill for 35, 36 years. And BFAC was my very first involvement in anything that has to do with Brookline. So I've learned a lot in that process, I can tell you honestly. Also, as background, I've been probably the most hawkish person on that committee and probably also the most politically incorrect one. So if I say something that is not necessarily kosher, I apologize in advance. There are important trade-offs that both the town and the school committee has to make. And the most important, what affects you guys more than the town, is service levels versus affordability. In times when we have excess funding, in times there's excess cash, we can afford to fly first class as much as we want to. We don't have those times anymore. It is not like in the 1960s or 70s where money was not an issue. The budget situation is excessively tight. Revenues grow less fast than expenses. And any way where we need to put into the planning process, the question of do we really need it or is it just nice to have? Do we need to fly first class or can we also fly coach? And the town has not really fulfilled that obligation in the past, and I don't think the schools necessarily have either. So affordability versus need, I think, is one important criteria around which major capital investments and types of services and programs that the schools provide need to be evaluated relative again to affordability.
Carol Levin. So the previous slides that David showed talked a lot about metrics and analysis and having a very rationalized analytical approach to how we allocate funds for different expenses. And things are no different when it comes to capital. Now, you're a school committee. You're not in the business of building buildings, though you've been finding yourself doing that more and more. And we feel that the town and the schools need to be doing a more analytical, reasoned approach to deciding where to be putting capital because in addition to the school's needs, there's also many other needs within the town. And once we identify a project, say a new school or the renovation of a school, how do we make a decision as to how much money we can spend? There's two approaches. You can take the approach that this is the program we want, let's design it, and then once we have everything we want, we're going to try and do it for as little money as possible. The other approach is looking at the town's budget overall and financial condition and saying, gee, how much money can the town allocate to this project? And then how do we do this the most cost-effective way possible and addressing as many of our programmatic needs? And we don't really have, or we have had historically, the tools and the resources and the leadership to do it. So we're very much encouraging that the analytical structure that we're talking about for the budget also be continued into the capital area. And also, we really feel that there's a need for some central process in the town to be looking at our debt structure, our cash flow, and deciding how much as a town can we afford to be both borrowing and investing in capital and then making very transparent allocation decisions about capital.
Yeah, and let me add one little thing to this. Over the last decades, we have gotten used to, hey, let's just do an override. And happily, all overrides pass because that's one way to finance first-class travel. You just borrow it. I think last year, we have learned that overrides are not necessarily a done deal. And with all the additional debt that we put onto our books, the real financial impact onto the Brookline households of the additional borrowings that need to have debt service and repayment and so on will only become apparent over the next few years. So I think BFAC felt really strongly that while overrides will be necessary with all likelihoods, but we really need to find a way to reduce them as much as possible and think about how many capital investments do we really need to make, at what level, so that we don't constantly have to go back to bigger and bigger overrides every other year. At some point, they're going to keep failing, and then I'm not really sure how to get out of it, right?
As has been mentioned with some of the other issues, it's very important that there be a common metric of analysis so that we're not dealing with mixed variables. So using a common evaluation template for all projects will be critically important. Include a full financial analysis showing assumptions on investment horizon, the life of asset, the cost of capital, the return on investment, payback time as a result of reduced operating expenses and/or increased revenues. The impact of a project on future long-term operating expenses should be fully considered. For capital investments with only partial or no direct financial benefits, proposals must identify their non-financial benefits and explain why they are needed as opposed to nice-to-have. Examples of non-financial benefits include educational programs, strength in neighborhoods, climate action goals, public safety, promotion of economic opportunity, and service quality. Using a common evaluation template for all projects whenever possible, a range of investment levels should be considered, with a difference in the costs and benefits between bare bones and Cadillac options presented and midpoints defined. The impact of a project and its funding on Brookline's AAA rating and its long-term impact on taxpayers should be presented. Level of analytical support should be determined by the size of the project. Any proposal in excess of $500,000 should go through a full analysis, with smaller projects requiring less formal attention. Now, for the next BFAC recommendation, which is to develop a financial improvement plan, I'm going to ask Mr. Spritz to come up and address that.
So Nathan Spritz. I'm sorry that I missed the beginning of this discussion. I was over at the OLS at the eighth-grade parent night, where everybody did a great job, by the way. Philosophically, most of us on BFAC really came to the conclusion that for both capital and for operating choices, we want some ability to foresee the future and have some predictability on both the revenue side and the expense side of any income statement. Now, the school committee isn't really in charge much on the revenue side. There's very little revenues that come through this group, a little bit, but very, very little. But on the expense side, I think it's important that programs that we put into place, we know that there's some long-term reliability, that they'll be there in the long term, that there's some persistence there. And that's one of the things that financial improvement plans and really studying our underlying future projected expenses will enable us to do, will help us to make better choices in the present, to look out forward into future years and to make sure that those same programs, which we think will benefit our students in the near term, will be there in the long run. You know, a number of these issues about increasing revenues, I think, might be interesting to the committee. There were a number of ideas that came in from the public. There were a number of ideas that came in from the public. The pilot program, just to go through these really quickly, a little bit less relevant here, but the pilot program of payment in lieu of taxes, which we are going to, you know, more actively pursue for those nonprofit entities that have substantial real estate holdings here in, here in Brookline. Airbnb fees, clearly, as Airbnb at the state level is better regulated, we might be able to, you know, stick our hand and, you know, and grab some money coming across that, you know, that toll as well. Building utilization, renting out spaces for, you know, for community groups, better managing costs, special education, medical expenses, these are things that I think that the people here in the committee have a much better understanding of than we do at BFAC. We did spend some time talking with Mary Ellen Norman and others in the school department over the stress that these unexpected expenditures due to near-term budgets. Building maintenance, I think that that was better addressed on the capital slide. There's, didn't go through the capital slide in all that much detail, but, but we do know that in recent years, there's been some crowding out, technical term, a technical economic term, there's been some crowding out of some of our capital projects. So not our full SIP has been fully funded to the, to the ability that the town really would like to and according to policy. Part of that has, has really led to perhaps some deferred maintenance on some of our buildings and roads. And that, that impacts both the school and the town side. You guys know much more about new, new school construction standards, playgrounds and fields than I will ever know. But here again, when we're looking at bringing a ninth school into existence, we're, we have to remember that we have, this is a financial improvement plan idea, that we have eight other schools that ultimately might have to be raised to the level that we want to build the ninth school. So that's, that's embedding a long-term capital cost into our, into our future renovation plans. And I think that might be a good idea. We're, BFAC didn't come out and say, no, don't do this because it costs too much. It says, recognize the costs as you're making the decisions. That's really what the financial improvement plans are all about. I don't have a whole lot more to say about this, so thank you.
BFAC recommendation number fourteen is to establish a maximum debt policy based on the ratio of direct debt to operating revenue. Brookline's debt service, the total revenues projected to triple from levels in FY18 to FY25. In the current environment, with multiple large-scale projects being financed over a small number of years, there may be unanticipated shocks to residents when tax bills fully reflect the cost of multiple debt exclusion votes. If taxpayers are not prepared ahead of time, there exists the possibility that adverse reactions could stymie any additional requests for revenues outside of Proposition Two and a Half. The Select Board and School Committee should communicate with transparency around the ultimate costs and benefits that taxpayers are agreeing to undertake with debt exclusion and overrides. As other members of BFAC mentioned, that's not to say that overrides would never occur or that they're never appropriate, but that the residents of town and the voters need to be able to anticipate them and understand their full impact. If they know an override is coming as opposed to having a relatively short notice, it might be easier and more understandable for why they should vote in favor of it. Potential debt policies would include maintaining net direct debt, total debt level divided by revenue to at least the A level. This recognizes the fact that the town is already at the A level and establishes a policy to not fall below that level. Recommendation fourteen dot two is to set a goal to achieve net direct debt divided by revenue to at least the double A level. This goal will help ensure the health of the town's balance sheet. BFAC recommendation fourteen dot three is to commit to full disclosure and transparency of existing, proposed, and planned borrowings when asking taxpayers to approve new debt exclusions. BFAC recommendation number fifteen, develop a strategy to plan for periodic operating overrides. That's what I was just addressing a moment ago about the importance of being able to anticipate what's coming so that everyone understands and can try to achieve a universal consensus around our priorities. BFAC recommendation fifteen dot one, any tax should be designed to allow for the broadest range of uses possible. These uses would include a range of projects which there currently is insufficient capacity in the CIP, such as open space parks and affordable housing. The town should avoid taxes that are designed as single-purpose levies. BFAC recommendation fifteen dot two, voters must be provided more information when presented with future override and debt exclusion ballot questions. An approach should be established that fully explains the impact of a single proposed tax in the context of other anticipated override or debt exclusion requests. BFAC recommendation fifteen point three, as the town develops plans, it must provide its taxpayers with the information to evaluate. So that again gets into the importance of anticipating, understanding opportunity costs, aware of trade-offs and alternatives. BFAC recommendation number sixteen is to consolidate the town and school financial planning into a single, integrated financial model that reflects fully allocated costs between the town and the public schools of Brookline to be used in all town and school budgeting, investment, and forecasting decisions. Brookline currently utilizes a five-year window for financial forecasting and CIP planning, with forecasts prepared separately by teams of the public schools of Brookline and the town administrator's office. The next steps at this point, the report was submitted in January, and now BFAC has an implementation plan that it intends to roll out over the next 24 months. Would any of the BFAC members like to address more what's going to occur with the BFAC implementation plan?
Uh, not really.
No? Okay.
No, I think, I think it's pretty much spread out in this spreadsheet. I think that, that no need for...
It has been sent out to all members.
So the one, the one thing that I will add to the, to the BFAC implementation plan is, yes, there's a, there's a calendar, there's a schedule, everything else is what we expect to see in a plan. But there's also people who are responsible for each of the steps. And the only way that we're going to, to really strengthen Brookline's finances is to make sure that, that we hold our, our elected officials and our most senior staff members accountable for seeing the, this plan through.
And I recommend for those of you who would like to see the punctilious details, we can refer to the full report and the appendix, which lays out when each issue should be taken up, how it should be addressed, who will be responsible for it, and the specific stakeholders involved. This presentation was intended more for the elements of the BFAC report that explicitly mentioned the schools as having a role in some manner. At the finance subcommittee meeting, we had a fuller discussion of this, and Cliff Brown and Motoffel, who are also members of the BFAC, were present for that. Many school committee members were present, I believe those six of us were there. If any of you have any questions that you'd like to address to the four BFAC members who are here, I think now would be a useful time to ask them, so that this can be more of an educational interplay.
Does anyone have any questions that they didn't have answered at finance? Yes?
So I don't know if we need to answer a lot now.
She has a list on her phone.
Oh, there's a long list. So, you know, the, the one thing I did say as finance subcommittee chair and as a recovering consultant is that if people tell you how much work you did and how great it was that you did all that work and how, how pleased they are and how grateful they are and they clap, that's like a really bad sign. It's just like kiss it off. It means they're not doing anything with it if they clap. But if they like ask hard questions, it means maybe they're actually going to do something with it. So I'll just, I will summarize the questions that came up. I, what, in that spirit, I'll summarize the questions that came up, and I don't think we have time to answer them tonight, because I think we are, our agenda ends at eleven thirty-five at this point. Okay. So let me just tee them up in recognizing that this is the beginning of a conversation, not the end. So in addition to the things we did like and the things we did clap at, things like long-term planning and financial integration, the Lexington Summit, long-term plans, et cetera, there was a lot there that was good. There were a number of questions, just sort of the what's the implication of this question. One was helping people understand what is the cost, the dollar value of a AAA bond rating? So I think there was some comment that was made by BFAC at the Select Board, which said, you know, you can go from AAA to double A, but you would want to do it strategically. And so what does strategically mean? Why would you do it? When would you do it? What's the cost of doing it? Because the whole thing is premised on keeping a AAA bond rating. And I think it makes sense intuitively, but if there's a financial cost to losing that rating, I think it would be really helpful to understand. The second thing is, there was some discussion of the growing budget gap. So if you kind of go back to your first page, the expense growth is unsustainable and it exceeds revenues. So we've been looking at that same chart for more than a decade, for the 2008 override, for the 2015 override, for the 2018 override, we keep looking at that chart. And the reason it looks like it's in balance and getting worse is because we have an override and then it's in balance and then it gets worse. So I think we were trying to understand, there's just something new and different here, whereas it's basically the same thing we've been looking at for the last decade. And if so, just changed a little bit about what kind of alarm bells are going off. So I'll just keep, I'll just rattle through all of them and then you can decide which ones you want to answer. Then there was a question about the, what is it that's driving, what is it that's driving the budget gap? And I think the structural gap. And so part of it was enrollment, but the other piece was, that was raised by some people in the conversation, was steps and lanes and health insurance and COLA. So if you have 5% increases every year, and we have plus health insurance, that we have two and a half percent revenues coming in, that that was a structural mismatch. So to whatever extent this relies on, you know, dealing with that, it's also something that, you know, is important in terms of our negotiations, which we're in the middle of, in terms of other towns and how they take, you know, advantage of this, sort of the managed gap, and, and because they're all in the same position that we're in. And so, and teachers are important to them, too. There was some conversation about what does it mean to have a common evaluation template? It's sort of rubics and metrics for establishing spending and investment priorities in excess of statutory requirements. So there was some conversation of like, what does that mean in terms of the school district? A lot of things we do are in excess of statutory requirements, like a lot of them. And many of those, if you took them away, would significantly compromise the school system. So I think we just didn't really understand what that meant. There was a conversation about fully allocated costs. When we've reviewed this in the past, we've decided that when you think about fully allocated costs, there's, you know, just taking Parks and Rec and the schools for a moment, there's so much back and forth between who rents whose gym and who provides which after-school program and which summer program and what are we doing in Tappan and what are they doing on the field? And just, it is, the cost to fully allocate costs would be pretty substantial. And so I think we were just looking for a little bit of a sense from you all as to what you had in mind by that, because to truly do an activity-based costing across this, it would be hundreds of thousands of dollars to do, and, and for sure, we would not get that kind of benefit out of it. So I think just some more guidance as to what you meant by that. There was a discussion of what the implication is of this debt approach to the Pierce project. I think there was some concern that if, if adopted, this would sort of indefinitely postpone the Pierce project. And so if that's not true, that would be helpful to understand how that works. And I think, you know, just sort of going through as a small editorial note, sort of the number of times that analytic approach, evidence-based decision-making, facts and evidence, objective criteria, data-driven evaluation, analytic rigor, common scorecard, analytic and strategic rigor, quantifying opportunity costs, like, we got it, okay? We got it. And I think that when we talk about that conversation in an educational setting versus some other kinds of settings, I think it's just helpful to think a little bit about what that means, because it means different things in different settings. So just a little bit more clarity as to what all those things mean in an educational context. So there might have been other things that came up. That's, that was my list. Other people might have had other things on the list. Again, we don't have to answer all now, but...
Well, that's my question. So my question is...
Ongoing dialogue.
On, in the ongoing dialogue, as we have this timeline in continuation of the work that's happening with this committee and in this conversation, is there a place where there's a, you know, where, where some of these questions get answered or work, you know, developed and worked on?
Oh, sorry, one more. And this one's actually important, sorry, unlike the other ones. So there was a lot of discussion about additional resources being needed and specifically the financial function being understaffed and the analytic function on the fifth floor being understaffed. And I, I think we just noted, I was saying, we noted that there are a lot of crosswinds on that issue. So if you ask, crosswinds. So if you ask a lot of people in the community, what they will say is, we have too many people on the fifth floor, we have too many people working on data and analysis, we have too many people, so, so, and if we're going to cut anybody, those are the first people to cut. And yet what we have from you is, we're woefully understaffed, we need to add people. So I think it's just, I want to bring those two conversations together somehow, and I'm not really sure how to do it, but we can't do both. We kind of have to figure out what that means. And especially if there was, and then there was a conversation of like, does this mean incremental new resources or is this kind of reallocating the money we have? The sense we were given was that it meant reallocating the money we have, not getting new resources for financial, for FTEs or analytic capacity. And so I think we just had a conversation, a question about that also. So where was that going to come from? What, what were we supposed to be reallocating? Just playing out the implications. Sorry, that was important, because I know we're going to talk about that later.
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Thank you. Thank you for all, thank you for all your hard work and all the hours you put in. No, in all seriousness, there's, there's a lot here for us to work with, so, thank you.
So just to, just to briefly respond, you know, we, the committee is now over. However, we, as individuals view that our educational work has just begun, and we will be making presentations and trying to encourage the various stakeholders in this process to carry out the things that we've suggested. Certainly, the first financial summit, when it gets scheduled, will be an opportunity to start the dialogue. And regarding that lifelong structural deficit that we've been seeing for many years, the thing that's different is, we've been finding ways to make that not be a reality. And one of the ways we've been finding that is, we discovered to be underfunding reserves. And also, I think on the town side, they will tell you that there has been a under-investment in certain items and a leaning of the staff in certain areas, and there's a limit to how much more of that can happen. And we're viewing this at, that we're at a point where perhaps things can't get any leaner as far as those services that have been, you know, made as efficient as they can be made. And we need to, for the overall financial health of the town, think about ways of bringing up those reserves to the levels that we think they should be. So that's the, the big answer.
I got to say this, I'm sorry. A step from, I didn't tell that to the town yet, but it will come up at some point. So I have the opportunity to ask you to do this. It should not be the committee that is responsible to get answers for the set of questions and discussions around this report. I think you guys need to appoint one person in this group sitting here who is taking the prime leadership to educate her himself on all of those issues that you brought up and then report to the committee. This cannot be a committee discussion to go down to the detail. Once that has been distributed, then the committee can get involved and discuss it, then it's, then there's an educational process happening. But we need to get some personal leadership, both on the town and in the schools, that stick their head out in good English, to take responsibility, to get all of those things done, and ask the appropriate questions and issues and disagreements that one might have in order to get them out of the open. This is important, now, strategies can never be done by committee. Strategies have to come from a certain kind of sticking my head out, taking a leadership in all of those issues. And hey, we are the town, we are used to town meetings and we are used to committees and subcommittees and triple subcommittees. But this is serious. This is not, this is not kind of process like we have done it for the last one hundred years. That doesn't mean that I want to abolish any committees and all this other stuff, but there need to be some leadership in those groups, people that are willing to... there needs to be some leadership in those groups, people that are willing to take responsibility.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, one more? But then after that, we're going to conclude and move to the, we do have a hefty agenda.
So I'd like to give a little bit of a different take here. I think Carol was right. We have seen more of the same and maybe we've been able to stretch something out an extra year maybe by some savings. But this is more of the same. I mean, we've seen enrollment growth that's really, you know, driven some of the costs in the schools. And we've seen, you know, COLAs and steps and lanes that have driven some of the HR costs. And it's, and on the town side, the same things. And so it's more of the same, going back to 2008. We've had three overrides. We're going to pass, we're going to need some more. BFAK was formed to try to get at what the structural deficit was, try to really understand and see if there were some ways out of parts of it, probably not all of it without an override. And on both the town and the school side, we struggled. We struggled mightily to get decent data so that we could study the, so we could study the answers. So if in reading your report, you see the words analytic and study this and do that, it's born a frustration that BFAK went through in having meeting after meeting after meeting and not being able to get down to the answers that we need. And actually, if we can't get to the answers that we needed on our committee, then we believe, at least I believe, that you can't get down to the answers that you need without having, whether either reallocating or, you know, getting some other resource that can really dig into, you know, some of these issues so that you can spend money provably well, so that if we do have to ask for an override, you can easily, honestly, have decent conversations with residents about why. Because the alternative to this is really something that I don't want to have to contemplate and I doubt that you guys want to contemplate either. Because at some point, if we decide not to do an override, that means that we're going to be cutting. And those cuts will not be painless. You know, they will be machetes. And we're really trying to avoid the machete. So, you know, Pete said that one of you really has to take the reins and do this. I think that there are a lot of people on this committee who are willing to spend a little bit of time, overtime after the committee is over, to help you with whatever questions you have. So you guys, you guys all know how to get ahold of me. You probably know how to get ahold of just about everybody on the committee, so just call. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next we are going to move back into executive session. So we have a motion to meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Union, BEU, Unit A, Unit B, and paraprofessionals, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Purpose six, consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body. Tempo Obay Shalom, 1187 Beacon Street, Brookline, Massachusetts. And we're going to take a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 And we'll be going back into open session. We do expect that this portion of executive session will take at least an hour. And we will be moving into the small conference room. So we have, next up, we have a possible vote on the FY 2021 Town Meeting Appropriation. Ms. Norman?
Just want to have the committee be informed that the revenue allocation from the Town School Partnership that will be in the Town School, Town, excuse me, the Town Financial Plan released, I think sometime next week or the week after, for the school department That represents approximately about a 5.1% increase over the current year Town Meeting Appropriation. That is not all of the resources available to the school committee when it establishes its revenue alloc, when it establishes its budget allocations and allocates those funds. The other two sources of funds that you will be making a determination on are tuitions and fees, and that's our materials fee account and the number for circuit breaker as an offset for our special education tuitions. So in the past, we've had the school committee vote that. The tradition I have come from in cities and towns is that the school committee would vote the Town Meeting Appropriation number as a request. In the case today, it is the number, it is what it is and it's the number and that's what will be moving forward to May's Town Meeting.
And just to clarify, Mary Ellen, we're not asking, today where the vote is not, how that is allocated within our budget, it is just the number. Okay?
Let's call it a formality, technicality for Town Meeting to do its service and duty and performance function.
Okay.
So again, the number is 123,361,138.
All right. I'm going to make a motion that we vote for that, what is the?
A meeting, request Town Meeting allocate, appropriate, request Town Meeting appropriate
Do I have a second? Ms. Cotto, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Norman?
I just want to be super, super sure that I'm very clear on what I'm voting for. So this does not give up school committee's rights to vote on how the money is being spent. That this is just a request at Town Meeting to give us a budget of this amount and then we will have further discussions about how that money will be appropriated.
Yes, Town Meeting only votes a bottom line appropriation for the school department. They do not vote any allocations within that. The autonomy that the school committee does have and that is very clear in statute is that the school committee decides how those resources are allocated, as well as all the other funds that they have under their authority, be it grant revolving fund or other special revenue account.
I think there were some questions members of the community had about our vote and how that was happening, so I wanted to make sure I was saying the correct information.
And I think the other thing to keep in mind, these numbers, which you can see here, are based on the governor's budget. And I know you're laughing, but in the past, in historical perspective, usually the House and then the Senate coming with more money. And if that does happen, we then divide it. So that's what's happened in the past.
Yes, and we do that in November. Is this part of the special town?
Could you tell us what that extra amount was from last year?
From $30,000 is what we, our FY 20 budget was adjusted.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, so, yes, Ms. Dr. Bromowitz?
I have a discussion. It's just, it's a question. It comes out of the chart that was presented during the Town School Partnership meeting in which it presented that $800,000 in sped costs are a standard allocation from the town to the schools in order to help us cover our sped obligations. Is that, what?
It's like the term sub-creation.
I'm sorry, it literally just says sped costs.
It's like a credit card.
Yeah, in any case, I'm wondering, I understand that in sort of the context of circuit breaker, there is a certain amount that kind of rebounds back to the district to fund. What percentage of our district-based obligations are funded by this 800,000? Or alternately, like, how much do we pay after circuit breaker so that I can subtract 800,000?
So I would not focus any time or attention on 800,000. I inherited that number. Both Melissa and I inherited that number. It had been a longstanding number in her spreadsheets. And we actually don't have documentation as to its origin, but when you take it out, it detrimentally impacts the school department. So it has not been removed, but it has not been changed or increased either. We can share with you and will be sharing with you as part of the tuitions budget. I think the question you have, which is, how much are our total tuitions? How much is circuit breaker net? How much is the town paying for? That information will have for you. And in short order, when we get Open Gov up and live, that will be, that will be in there. And so I would not correlate any of that to the Town School Partnership. I would just say, here's our circuit breaker offset and here's what the town's tax levy is supporting and funding, and leave it at that.
Okay. I have another question, which is similar to the question that I also raised at the Town School Partnership meeting, which has to do with the foundational assumptions regarding the total size of the public schools of Brookline budget in the conversations that went into the Town School Partnership allocation discussion. What number were we anticipating that we would require when we were allocated? You wrote it down. 123,361,138.
Back when the override was contemplated and planned out in April of 2018, which was also presented on Mr. Lomis's presentation, we were looking for $123,886,605 from the town. So we're shy about $500,000 short of that original projection back from April of 2018. And you also heard in the committee meeting, the Town School Partnership meeting, some of the reasons as to why that shifted and what some of those changes were that impacted that. We also had significant amount of, we also had in the April 2018 override approximately $500,000 in revenue offsets that have been removed from our operating budget as offsets because they were not identifiable actual revenue sources. So that was another change. So that in itself is $1 million and part of why we have an ongoing structural deficit.
I'm going to ask one more question and then I'll stop. There's been ongoing discussion about whether or not previous commitments that were made to allocate marijuana revenue to the schools has been fulfilled in this budget year, has it?
I can't answer that because I don't have the detailed knowledge to be able to answer that. I think you saw in the Town School Partnership, an effort on the part of the town administrator to acknowledge that when the revenue streams were sort of, I'll call it, split, so you have a general fund receipt and then you have receipts that were split off as having due mitigation. When that commitment was made back in April 2018, there was no split like that where those revenue sources were going to be committed for, have to be committed for certain services. So I think you saw that an effort on the part of the town administrator and the Town School Partnership to acknowledge that and return some of those funds as part of the Town School Partnership allocation. That was that HVC line, which was a negative 400,000. They were trying to replace that.
Oh, great. So in your packet, you have a draft of a revised field trip policy that is here for first reading, no vote tonight. It's a first reading. It is out for public comment. We will be absorbing those comments for a while and take any comments that this group has. Some of the main sort of things to note about the field trip policy, this draft field trip policy, it's intended to establish sort of the baseline of information that the district wants in advance of approving a field trip policy, also sort of making clear as to what the approvals, approval, where the approvals lie for field trips, for certain types of field trips, and establishing dates by which materials related to field trips need to be submitted. Number of other things that, some of which are in the old field trip policy but are updated a bit and incorporate some new things like conflict of, conflicts of interest language, which we find in most field trip policies in other districts. And I'm happy to take any questions or comments that people might have. And I do note the spacing errors in a couple places that you do not need to remind me that those aren't there.
Now I noticed that in different conversations about the field trip, conversations about the field trip policy that have taken place at Polis, there have been questions, like there was this, there were big discussions about what should be in the field trip policy. So for example, if there's a field trip and there's swimming or you're going to ride in a boat or things, and this is a very more pared-down version, was that?
That's intentional. So we start, when we first started talking about this, we started talking about all of those things and every permutation that could occur. And it quickly got a little bit out of control and started to look less like a policy and more like a, really a set of procedures, which, as a lot of folks know, we've tried to not have our policies include procedures for various different things. The expectation, I think, is that a lot of those issues, which are all valid issues, should be dealt with in the development of the procedures for this policy when those are developed by the administration.
So there are a couple of things, like, was that one of the considerations with host families, for example, and like what process would need to take place in order for vetting of the host family and how?
Yeah, that's, that is, that is true. It is incumbent upon the administration to develop procedures that deal with all of those, whether they're safety-related or whatever it may be, logistics, whatever, to put procedures in place that establish those, establish the guidelines by which those things will be dealt with.
So one of the conversations that we used to have in a robust way is, you know, sort of describe your plans to ensure, you know, a representative or a diverse group of students. And you can define that however you want, racial diversity, income diversity, however you want to define it, but special education diversity. But is there anything in here where we are explicitly asking them to tell us the efforts that they have made to ensure a diverse population?
No, that, the language of that nature is not in here. You know, there's certainly language about prevention of discrimination. We can certainly consider that. So what, I guess the...
So for example, if it... Where's the line between like, how are you meaning the policy versus the procedure part? Or are you wanting to have some procedure?
It's not a, so it's a question that gets asked, or at least, I can say when I was chair. Okay, so, right, so, when you get, you can turn your mic, but yes, when you get a field trip form and when we would look at them in doc at room... and when we would look at them in doc at review, I would always ask the question of what efforts have been made? Like, are these gonna be all white kids? Are they gonna be all deaf kids? Are they gonna be all special needs kids? Are they gonna be all substance test kids? Whatever it is, and then tell us what efforts have been made, if any, if it's appropriate, to, to consider the diversity of the group. And some people had really good answers to that question, and some people didn't. And I think that was a helpful conversation, is helpful discipline to ask each time, because I think it prompted questions. So, to my mind, it's not a procedure. It's not like we're, we're not telling them how to do it. It is a, it's a philosophy that we want to keep that in mind, and what went along with that, and then I will stop, is making it very clear that no one was excluded for financial reasons. And that, one question we always had was, are they, are they eligible for the financial aid, for financial aid from the district? So, and then the third one we asked was, days of, you know, how does this count against absences? Because there's a whole set of things at the high school about absences. What else doesn't count for, excused absences, unexcused absences, how many you can have? So those are the three that I remember, and I'm going back in archaeology now, but I'll just leave those with you.
Yeah, well, and I'll, I'll say a little bit about each one of those. You know, certainly, I think we can, we can consider language that, that requires that there be reasonable efforts to ensure that there's, there's diversity in all its forms among the participants in the attendees of the field trips. In terms of financial reasons, certainly this does not prevent the financial assistance policy from kicking in for, for any trips that we have. In terms of, I think there's a real question, and we struggled with this, in terms of the reality of whether there are trips that are accessible to some people of greater financial means and not accessible to others. And I think we could say something, I think where we didn't wanna go was saying something like, everyone shall ensure, or we were hesitant to go, everyone shall ensure that, that no one is excluded as a result of costs, because we think the reality reflects something different than that. And, and, so I, so it's a, it's a question, and it's a good question, and it is one that we talked about. And I'm, I'm open to talking about how we best deal with that, whether this is the right place to sort of have something about that or, or not. Because I, I think as well-meaning as we wanna be, we don't wanna have the flip side be that we eliminate a number of field trips that we've historically gone on.
Well, or that we find ways, either through fundraising or district means to pay for them, because that inequity is a really big deal, even if we've historically gone on it. And if only certain kids have historically been able to go on it, it's still a problem. So for me, I actually think it's really important that, that either the coordinator of the trip or the district or someone, you're out of way to make it accessible. And if, and if they can't, I actually do think that there's a real question as to whether or not we should run it. If it's not, if that is the reality of any given trip, and we know it is, I think that, I think that needs to be a bigger conversation. We know that people don't, we know that students don't apply for committees like school committee representation, because we don't have stipends, and I think that's a problem. So anyway, I, I do think it's a part of a bigger problem, but it fits here, because this is a financial issue.
No, I, I get that. I, I'm just trying to find the right balance. I mean, it's the balance of sort of finding ways to bolster the financial assistance policy that we have, or, and the funds available to provide financial assistance. Because I, I totally understand, and I agree with you where you're going. I guess the reality, the result I don't want is that we eliminate a substantial number of field trips that we have historically gone on because of this. You know, do we, what do, what else do we eliminate? I mean, do we eliminate China exchange? Is that, is that an issue? Do we, where do we, where do we go with this?
That has been a big conversation.
So, that, I mean...
Accommodations have been made for exactly that purpose, for any of the purposes.
I know, but could they be made 100% of the, can we ensure that they're gonna be made 100% of the time? And I, and it's a, it's a terrible thing to say. I don't like talking about it like this. You know, because we all want everybody to have access and opportunity. But it's, it's, it's something that we struggled with in the conversation.
I, I don't struggle with it, so I'll...
Well, and others can weigh in.
No, I'm kinda with Susan on this one. I, I, I'm thinking it should be right up here. The right of a student to participate shall not be infringed upon by all of these things, including somehow ability to pay or something around that. I mean, just, you can just add that, I would think. But I, I do think it's an important part of the conversation.
Well, but I think we do need to have some consensus, are, are we gonna start canceling trips? I mean, is that, is that where we're, is that where we're going to go?
I hope we're not gonna cancel trips. But I do think in a sense to just, for there to be some kind of acknowledgement that our goal is to make sure that every student who wants to can participate in trips, no matter, you know, financial status, blah, 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 blah. We do have trips, however, I mean, basic classroom field trips are covered by the financial aid policy, the financial assistance policy. I don't think that applies to our international trips that happen at the high school. Like, I don't, I think that the responsibility lies with the folks who are organizing the trip to fundraise, to support students in attending. So there, there's like two different veins. So every time you think, every time you talk about field trips, I'm really thinking about international field trips, because they're the things that are the bane of my existence. But, you know, we really need to think about broadly how we make sure that it's, it's, it comes to everyone's attention, that that's the goal. I don't think we should get to a place where we're canceling field trips.
And I, and I guess that's the guidance I'm looking for from the rest of the members of the committee, is, where do you wanna be on this? Where, do you wanna say that if there's anybody who can't go because of financial reasons, that the trip gets canceled? Is that where we wanna go? And that's, that's a legitimate question.
You know, I, I think one of the things, because when we're talking about the more costly trips, it's the high school. I would sit down and talk with the high school principal and, and see what, you know, what, has this been an issue? What have they done? Because my sense is, they've found funding through, there's, there's some fund, I think, that just came through recently that we okayed for exactly this purpose. And, you know, I just think it would be a good idea to sit down with him and understand what happens today, understand our kids being excluded, because my sense is that they aren't, but I don't know that for a fact.
Yeah. I think we can find that out. I, I know that one of the bigger challenges, we don't even get to financial assistance, because kids are not even engaged in the group of kids who are going off to Germany. So there's, there's a, you know, the kids not sitting, sitting together in the cafeteria issue.
That's the part of the first question.
Right? And so that's, that's way bigger than the financial aspect. It's like, who's in the circle that even has that conversation about going on the trip?
Right. And that's why I think, you know, when we get those forms from the high school about, you know, can the kids swim, can, what is the diversity of the group that's going? That's sort of our checks and balances, I think, and our way to say to them, and we should keep that. We may want, you guys may wanna look at that again, to see what's on there, to make sure we're hitting those points, because, you know, we can put anything in a policy, but if it's not being read, because I don't think the policy necessarily is read by the practitioners, it's more that sheet that they have to fill out. So, you know, I think it's a balance.
And it can be part of the procedures. The work, the authentic work that needs to happen is far beyond recruiting for, for field trips, so that kids even feel a connection to wanna go to some foreign land with people they don't normally even interact with.
The, the last piece that, that you mentioned, in terms of absences and whatnot, I mean, I think the goal is to, in the not-too-distant future, have a revision of the attendance policy as well, which, which would cover some of those, some of those issues, which is why it's not here. Okay.
All right. So thank you for, for that, and we have, do, what is the, when does the public comment period close?
It, there's no set date for closure on that. I think it's gonna stay open until we schedule a time for a second reading, if we schedule a time for a second reading. I'm not exactly sure what to do with this financial assistance piece, quite frankly, because I, I don't know if I've heard from everybody else, and I don't know what the committee thinks. If people wanna provide comments to me separately as to how this, how they feel this should be structured, that's, that would be helpful.
Yes, Ms. Drummond.
In terms of this structure issue, at the policy subcommittee, there was a discussion about whether this issue of financial need is much broader than a field trip policy. I believe that it is, which is why I'm not sure that this particular policy is the place to address it. But that's something for the committee to decide, I think, whether we want to incorporate that element into every single policy we have involving student services, or have another policy that addresses financial assistance.
I guess I'm just wondering, are we talking about the ability of only students who qualify for financial assistance? Or are we talking about other students who may fall outside that band that cannot afford to go on those trips? So I think there's a range, and so what are we trying to encompass, and how do we fund that?
Yeah, and the fin, and that, that's an interesting question, because I, maybe that's a question about the financial assistance policy itself, as opposed to the field trip policy. You know, the financial assistance policy, if I remember correctly, has bands in it for different levels of assistance, depending on, depending on family income, et cetera. And whether we need to revisit those bands, or revisit them, depending on the, the cost of the trip, you know? It's one thing if you're talking about a couple hundred dollars or a hundred dollars. It's another thing if you're talking about several thousand dollars.
Can I, can I just note that, like, I...
I mean, I'm looking at the language at the top of page two, under access, where I feel like, I mean, we might be able to clarify it a little bit, or bump it up a little bit, but I mean, this is here. "The right of a student to participate in any field trip shall not be infringed upon or impaired by the use of gender, race, ethnicity, color, national origin, ancestry, religion, sexual orientation, sexual identity, or disability. Files for all students participating in a field trip shall be reviewed to determine if any accommodations or modifications are required in order for a student to participate in and have equal access to such field trip." Now, I, that, that seems to me like a very, like, robust entry point. I then think that that, you know, needs to be used to leverage an appropriate set of procedures at the district and school levels, in order to make sure that equity and access to these field trips are being appropriately accommodated. It may be that accommodations or modifications are insufficient. I mean, we may need to add an additional word, like, support accommodations or modifications. You know, financial assistance, support accommodations or modifications. But I also, I, I also think that in that long list of things, like gender, race, ethnicity, color, we don't actually have anything about income background, right? So economic status, so why don't we, in a, in a next draft, include economic status or socioeconomic status, you know, in that list? And then add financial assistance, comma, support, comma, accommodations, comma, or modifications?
It is, that is setting, I mean, this is what, it does set a different precedent about the, so, for example, if there is a trip to China, and in the trip to China, there are five applicants who are under the financial assistance policy, are we making the determination as a district to, and, and those students receive 100% funding of lunch or other, that, that as a district, we would fund that trip for the five students?
There's a part of me, and I think this is a lot of, just because of how I grew up, but I think it's important too, that with these extra, these big trips, that, that students have an investment in being part of the process of raising that money to, to do that fundraising, that we should offer that. And so, like, financial assistance policy is a, is a little bit different, and it's structured, I think, a little bit different, and, and I think there's a little sliding scale there, but it is a contribution that we make. So I mean, a partnership, I think, would be. I, I just think that there's an investment of like, of dedication to wanting to go, but that an opportunity needs to be provided, like, there needs to be a way to do that, sort of a system set up, like, a big sale might not cut it, but do, like, some sort of process, like, that students can participate in.
So, just so you're aware, part of the reason that the May of the year before date is put out there is to have that opportunity to do fundraising, to work through the summer if they need to, to make some money to be able to go on the trip. So there, there is that, that piece in there.
I would have been one of those kids who needed to raise some money.
Right. And, and, and the group does it. It's not just individuals, the group together. And checks out, works to help them, but, but even for some of the other trips too. They do all sorts of creative types of fundraising to, to be able to afford the trips.
Okay. So I think, though, that we can have a lot more robust conversation about this. I would like for that conversation to first take place at POLIS, and then you guys can have the thoughts, and whoever would like to participate in that robust conversation on this issue, can then come back to school committee with some additional thoughts about ways we can address this. So, but I think there's clear message that this is something we want more, more discussion about. So we're gonna go on to the interim, interim superintendents report.
I just wanna thank the committee for their comments, and they are very much appreciated. I mean that. You laugh at me, but I'm actually serious, I mean that.
I think Michael would like us to assign something else to POLIS.
Coffee hour meeting, and sorry, thank you. In the school's auditorium, I provide an update on district priorities as well. We've been focusing on this year and the budget. Dr. Zavellius also provide a short update on the planning that's underway for the development of an additional strand to support students with complex needs, including those with autism spectrum disorder. Dr. Zavellius explained how Casey No Miller, Melissa Devine, and Runcle Staff are working with Heath to support teacher and community learning about the RISE program. That's ongoing and will have, continue to happen in the coming months. My remaining meetings include Lawrence School later this month, and Baker School as well, and then also with the BHS PTO Executive Board in March. These parent meetings in each school are in addition to my meetings with the PTO leaders and school site council leaders from across the district that I hold monthly in the town, at here at Town Hall. During these regular meetings with parent leaders, I'm able to share the latest district news and also use the opportunity to showcase a district initiative or program area. For example, Dr. Kalis Warrenon presented about the district's cultural proficiency work. She did more than present, she engaged the, the group in activities and learning. Kathy Hubbard presented about, about Arcade Math Max Program. And Casey No Miller will be presenting about the district's social-emotional learning work that's ongoing. Also, in upcoming meetings, we will be discussing, PTO leaders wanna discuss and learn from each other about recruitment and efforts as they, and volunteer development efforts, as well as fundraising efforts. So they'll get a chance to share what's going well and the challenges in those areas and others. There we go. School councils. So I wanna update you on the work we're beginning on school councils. We are presently drafting updated guidance documents for school leaders regarding the school councils, the new documents to be consistent with the mass law and school committee policy. We share with principals at our regular leadership team meeting on February 24th. At that point, we'll inco- At that point, we'll incorporate, or after that meeting, incorporate the input and feedback from principals, and share the final documents with the school committee for your review before the new guidelines are rolled out. In the interim, I've instructed principals to maintain their current school council membership and meeting schedule and continue their work as planned while they await new guidance that will help them to strengthen the school councils. A couple of different schools are sort of actively in the midst of making changes, and I don't want them to do that, because I don't want them to get ahead or spur different activities without further guidance, or change things in advance of other schools actually doing any of that work. So we're sort of putting a hold on that until we can get them clear guidance, and so we can work and have consistent approaches across our school councils. Just one more thing that happened today. Bay Cove Academy had to evacuate the Coolidge Corner School. Learned today about 25 students and staff at Bay Cove Academy, which is at 56, 156 Loton Street, were evacuated to Coolidge Corner School. There was a gas leak in the street in front of Bay Cove, and was causing a strong natural gas odor. And out of caution, it was suggested that they evacuate their building. The Bay Cove principal reached out to Principal Bowler at CCS, and Principal Bowler and her staff were more than happy to oblige. CCS made the visitors, which is about 25 to 30 folks, at home in the library, getting lunch in the cafeteria, and supported the Bay Cove staff as they contacted their parents to make arrangements for student pickups. The gas leak was localized to the immediate area on Lawton Street, and there's never any concern about CCS, which is about a half mile away from the area of the gas leak. Principal Bowler reached out to CCS family to let them know what had transpired, and all Bay Cove students had been picked up by their parents by 1:00 p.m. I'd like to thank Vice Principal Bowler and her team, Vice Principals Olaf, Semelares, and Burke for their quick action and support, and without a moment's hesitation, they provided assistance, managed the needs of their unexpected visitors, and kept everything at CCS running smoothly without even a hint of interruption. So, any questions or clarifications from the committee?
I have several questions about the process for developing guidelines for school councils. The first question that I have is, what is the anticipated timeline for the new guidelines?
So, as it says here, we're going to share the first draft of it with principals on the 24th. Depending on the feedback, we'll adjust it, and then I'll share it with the committee probably the following week, or week after. And then, we intend for the new guidelines to go into effect for the new school year.
I have concerns about that. Probably the most significant concern that I have is that it is common practice in other districts that have active school councils to ensure that elections take place for school councils at the end of the previous academic year, so that school councils are ready to go in September with work on their school budgets and their SIPs in September. Frequently, they, school councils in other districts are reminded by the central office that they need to meet early, and they need to meet often, in order to start working aggressively towards the development of SIPs and budgets.
Can I just clarify, just because on this specific topic? So, yes, that would, that's in the conference we've already had, is that, yes, they would be in place in any elections, and that's really what happened this school year for next school year. So, that's part of what we expect.
The other question that I have is, how are principals obtaining information about how to set up guidelines for school councils outside of the, outside of the DESI guidelines, which are both specific and open to interpretation, and our policy, which is both specific and open to interpretation? Especially, I'm concerned, because we don't have a recent memory of active school council engagement in this district, and so I kind of wonder what knowledge base they're building on, and whether or not they're going to be working with their own school councils. Like, what sources are they working from in order to develop these guidelines?
So, my staff and myself, we're creating the guidelines, the draft. They'll be providing input on what can, cannot work, is feasible, based on their past experience on these, and school councils have been operational for years now, and so I kind of reject the claim that there's no experience with these.
I want to emphasize, particularly with regard to the development of SIPs and budgets, school councils have not, certainly not consistently, but definitely not in the majority of school councils, had granular level access to their actual school budgets for many, many, many years. And for the last three years, which would presumably include the membership of quite a few current school council members, SIPs have been distributed to school councils from the district. So I'm really concerned about sort of how this determination about feasibility is being made, and I'll be looking out for that when we see the draft guidelines that are being presented to us.
I'm surprised to hear you say that, because for the past several years, the curriculum committee has been setting up meetings with school councils, have looked at the policies that they have. They vary greatly from school to school on what they are working on, and the parents have been a very active group at each school we have visited. So I'm surprised to hear what you're saying, because it certainly doesn't line up with my interaction with school council, and I have visited for the past couple of years school councils from every school.
Ms. Otto, I wonder if as the interim superintendent develops what this procedure is going to be in the timeline, do you think it's something that you could put on the curriculum subcommittee, since the curriculum subcommittee has spent so much time working directly with site councils, that that might be a good place to have robust conversation about what that process looks like, or if there are questions about it, or to get feedback? Perhaps that would be a good place for this conversation to rest before it bumps to full committee?
I also want to just push back on the claim that the district has handed out and distributed school improvement plans to school councils, okay? What was created three years ago with principal input, and from their request, and I think also, I can't remember, maybe the committee's request, was to have a common template that was used, okay? Folks can dispute and have concerns about that template, but in no way, shape, or form other than the template has anything handed, or distributed, or dictated from the central office on what the school improvement plan should be.
I just want to also say that this is something we took up in policy subcommittee, and we're having conversations with them, revisiting our policy, and talked about revising that. I'm glad to see that.
Policy about site council?
Yeah. Yeah, we have a policy on school site councils, and so we've been talking about, we've already started looking over our policy, so I'm eager to see sort of, you know, like, what revisions, and, you know, I think we need to sort of revitalize, or like, look at and see how our school site councils are working. I think that, just looking at, like, elections and procedures, and sort of like, how everything is running, and I do think there is some communication that we could work on in education around the role, like, the jobs and the roles, and like, even, you know, going, having site councils go through our policy, and sort of seeing like, what it is that the expectations are, and what decisions they're making, and so, you know, I know that it's really important that our principals are sort of looking at the areas they want to work in, but, and the goal is that the site council should develop those goals together in collaboration with parents and community members, and teachers, and principals, to develop those goals together. So I think that we just sort of need to look at how that information is getting out, and the consistency across our schools, and the information that they are getting from us about how they should be operating, and what kind of education we're doing. So I think those are some of the things, and I'm sure Mr. Glover has more to say. And those are concerns.
Yes, I really look forward to hearing back about the work that the policy subcommittee is doing on this. At 10:35, I'm going to let you say one thing, and then I'm moving us along to the next.
All right. Two things, just to reiterate, and one thing you could consider as part of this is just communications around elections with the rest of the, with the entire school community, I think. I think that very, that seems to vary widely, and is more effective at some points than others, so thank you about that. And just reminding folks that those, that site council meetings are subject open meeting, and they need to notice them, take minutes, all that stuff.
Okay, nope.
So, just, yes.
No, it's a different item. We have robust conversation, no, we have robust conversation to come on some of the items under Capitol, including a vote and a discussion about the Driscoll parking plan, and it is now 10:35, and so if those things need to happen tonight, we should move along to them. So, is there anything else from finance that needs to be reported on that we haven't already discussed at our very robust meeting?
No, but we, I'm going to ask the finance committee after this if we need to have the meeting the Wednesday after vacation, because I'm not sure we will have new information by that point. So my intent is to cancel it potentially, unless people have an objection, and to give people that time back, and then take it back when we need to ask for it.
Yes, okay. Capitol, we have a discussion and a possible vote. I have the, if we could start, I have the language.
Yes. Actually, so, as many of you remember, we determined that we wanted to continue our leasing of the space at Temple Ove Shalom, and, excuse me. Mr. Gillis was able to negotiate a lease that we discussed in executive session, and now I would like us to vote it, and you have the language.
I do. I talked about too many different things tonight.
Approved the lease for a three-year term, that much I remember.
So we wanted to...
It was a three-year term for approximately $210,000. I had it all here, too.
So we're going to direct the staff, so the motion is to direct the staff to negotiate a lease of a three-year term with seven one-year extensions, and then there are several other provisions that have been agreed upon and have gone back and forth with Temple Ove Shalom, and so with those terms...
I think it was $210,000, and with, every year, the rent could increase according to the CPI, which was agreed upon, which areas CPI, to the maximum of 6% in any year.
Okay. So you're making that motion?
I'm making that motion.
Do we have a second? Ms. Otto? All right. All of those in favor? Great. That's unanimous. All right, now we have a discussion and possible vote on the Driscoll parking plan and building project management.
I wanted to.
Oh, sorry.
Because it happened to come to Capitol Subcommittee.
Sorry, sorry.
I mean...
Okay.
Good.
So, as many of you remember, in previous school projects, we've voted on parking plans to submit to the Transportation Board. This was requested also this time for the Driscoll school. We had actually requested parking plans when we did the Coolidge Corner School for Driscoll and Lincoln at the same time, and got some extra spots, but with the new building, the expanded staff, and the need for parking, and the decision to put, at the time, 25 spots underground, correct me if I'm wrong. 25, that were supposed to be underground parking. To reduce that, in order to make sure that we met the budget for the building, we determined that we needed to go back to the Transportation Board, actually, the School Building Committee for Driscoll, determined that, and asked for more parking. The School Building Committee also asked for the Capitol Subcommittee to look at the parking and to make some sort of recommendation to the full school committee. We discussed this on Tuesday at the Capitol Subcommittee. We talked, looked at drawings that you have here, different options, and also, I think, included here was a plan for drawing onsite of where parking might...
Show that here.
Right.
Do you want me to go through the, I was going to go through the different, the parking plan here?
Sure.
And then also the onsite as well, is that...
I was going to do that, but that's fine.
You sure?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that you knew it was out here.
Yeah, no, Todd.
So, essentially, as we knew that the underground park was going away, we started looking at options, okay? One of the options that came pretty quickly was, and was suggested by members of the committee and others, was more parking on Beacon Street. So this is Beacon here, along the way, you also have in front of you on paper. And so, then asked associates did a study to identify additionally, what parking could be done, not in the, not in the commercial area, right near Washington Square, but further out on Beacon. So, and so you see what this is in front of you is sort of the most possible spaces that could be used, okay? Could be ever needed for all the staff members that would need parking. Is calculated in this, on this map to not have any parking on site, okay? It has, so it has extra spots also that are up the hill here, on Lancaster Terrace, up the hill, and these would be considered optional, sort of if teams wanted to be there. These are closer to the building, but they're also up a steep hill, and so we're not, we want, don't want to force anyone to park up here. But what you see on Beacon towards Coolidge Corner are, you know, gosh, it's 17, 21, 28 spots, okay? And then going south, you have as many as 25 spots along Beacon. What we do know is that there is large numbers of spots here. So the outlying spots, in this case, number nine, the nine here, which is at 1824 Beacon Street, that is the furthest to Field, it's .5 miles, which is comparable to two other schools. This farthest to Field here is a little bit shorter than that, about .4 miles. So what we're showing you is, even in the worst-case scenario, meaning there's no parking on site, the furthest they have to go, it's comparable to what we have at other schools, we would, we're suggesting that to recommend this to the Transportation Board, because it gives us the most flexibility. Meaning, if we put, able to put, or you decide, and Building Committee and Select Board agree to put parking on site, then, you know, we're not using the outlying spaces here, okay? And then you get to a matter where you're .3, .2 miles away, which is some of the shortest distance in the district. Do you want to add to that?
Yes, I do.
Great.
So, obviously, the hill parking on site includes those sites up on the hill, that's number one, to make it mine, but can those are... Oh, sorry. No. I said, yes, this would be all the sites you would need, but it would include the sites that are on the hill, on Lancaster Terrace, and on New York Terrace. The other piece that is very important to note is that those six spots on Summit, and the six spots up on Beacon, at the ends, are more than a half a mile away. And I think what I would like to let people know is, we had a very robust conversation at the Capitol Subcommittee, and our unanimous recommendation was to go for what we called Option D. So Option D incorporates all these parking spaces, that's Option C, that Todd is going to recommend to the Transportation Board, so that we don't come back to him ever again for more parking spaces, is basically the way he put it. But along with that, we recommend Option D, which includes 38 spots on site. 20, do you have a map of that, too? That's great. The one, the actual drawing? Yeah. So, if you look at that, the two blue lines, those are 25 spots plus two handicap spots on that side of the building, where there presently is a parking lot, and where you need to have a certain amount of space to get through there. So, and the other site, and those would be the 25 that could replace...
This accessway needs to remain.
Exactly.
That is not optional. You have to have this strip of pavement already, Bartlett Crescent.
Right.
And so, in addition, there would be these two blue strips.
And we're not, we're not sure what the fire department may request in terms of access, and, you know, how many spaces might not be able to be parked in. We'll find that out. And then the second spot where Mr. Lummis is showing is 13 spots that are in the alleyway behind the school, that'll be between the businesses that are on Beacon Street and the school. It's basically space, that's a car's length of space, that whole space, and I thought it was actually a brilliant way for the architect to find some more parking on site for teachers. I can, or maybe you want to talk about... I can, maybe you want to talk about what the staff and the principal want, or you want me to?
Yeah, I mean, Suzie Tulokdar has talked about quite a bit about the most parking possible. You know, the staff right now is there 53 spots, 52 spots on site, and they're concerned about losing any of those. So what JLA did to increase is adding the 13 parking spaces there. The advantage of those is you're, they're very efficiently used space because they can back up on the alleyway. And also, in terms of open space or green space there, that's sort of would be minimally used, there's a plan to be a retaining wall there. So while it does impact about 2,000 feet of open space, what they're telling us is it would be, you know, not very well-used or usable space. Suzie Tulokdar did raise the question of, you know, adding in additional spaces here. I think is what Eric was just talking about. I personally think there's going to be a lot of pushback if you start encroaching upon any of this green space. The advantage here is we're already using something that really can't be green space because of Bartlett Crescent.
Usable green space. It's green, some of it.
So, I mean, I, so tonight, actually, I, but there is, you know, there, from the very beginning of this project, when it was first, you know, part of the three-school plan, one of the real strong commitments from the building chairs and the building committee and others in the community was to maximize open space. It's always been a strong push.
And I think one of the things that's important to note also, the building has shrunk a bit, thereby allowing for some more open space, along with the architect. The other day, I was, he was showing a plan where off of the library, there would be a patio, an outdoor patio that is usable open space. I think the way that the open space is used for parking here is not space that you would use for play or anything of that matter. But now, Ms. Ditkoff, I know you.
I have a different perspective. First of all, just to correct something, Mr. Lummis is correct, these spots are all within a half a mile. So with zero parking on site, they're all within half a mile.
But these are beyond...
If you Google 1814 Beacon Street, if you Google 1814...
1824 Beacon Street.
Either way, it's a half a mile. It's a half a mile. So, just to be clear, all of the spaces on here with zero parking on site are within the half a mile, which is what we have at CCS, which is what we have at Baker, which is what we have at Brookline High School. So if there's zero parking on site, it is completely equitable with three of our other buildings. That's number one. Not saying we want our teachers walking half a mile. I'm just saying with zero parking on site is completely equitable with three of our other buildings. Number two, I appreciate that those areas are not the most gorgeous greens. It's not Lars Anderson Park in that alley, okay? However, the idea of having the pre-K playground, let's say, let's say there were a row of trees there that were buffering pre-K playground from the business area, from that awful alley, I can imagine that would be a better use of the green space than cars. Just saying. Same thing with, to the left of the building, it is certainly true that we need that center pathway for easement purposes, but I disagree that therefore it's unusable, low-quality green space. I think that you can put a pathway there, you can put benches there, people can rest. This is a, this is a place for the entire community. And so I feel very strongly about the green space commitments that we made, probably because I was out there making them, but also I think it's the right thing to do to add green space in North Brookline, as long as for me, it was not being, you know, making it inequitable, inequitable for the rest of the district. And I think that losing 6,000 feet of green space, we'll never get it back. We'll just, we'll never get it back. So I, for the purposes of tonight's vote, if to the extent that the vote is about asking for these spots from the parking, from the Transportation Board, I'm completely on board, I don't support 38 spots on site, and I won't vote for it.
Something Helen that you said earlier. If we don't do the onsite parking, these spots up on the hill will be included.
Correct.
I think they are, I think they're, I think just such a bad idea. What are you going to do in the ice and snow when people are trying to walk down from there? I won't vote for that if they are not optional for people to use.
So they're intended to be optional, as it says there, the staff optional spaces?
But this is not what Helen said. No, but if you, if you don't put parking on site, you need to use everything.
So first of all...
True.
This parking count does not take into account any, does not take into account potential reductions if the town ever funds the transportation demand management program. It doesn't take into, it assumes that 90% of the staff are going to drive, which may or may not be true. I mean, there are a lot of assumptions. We were trying to do a worst-case scenario. We were not trying to like, you know, be conservative. We were trying to say, what do we really, really need so we don't have to go back to the Transportation Board? So in my opinion, those spots are never going to get used, and they're going to be optional. I would be very surprised if we ended up in a place where those were not optional.
We heard from a staff member today about how important it is to be able to get her art supplies in and out. And I think, you know, by having spaces on site, and we are going to continue to have people who travel between buildings and need to get in quickly to get to their kids, to be able to teach, I think that, I understand your desire, and I would love to have more green space everywhere, but I think there's some green space that's prime green space and some that's not as prime. And if we can find a way, and I think what the, what we discussed at the Capitol Subcommittee and the recommendation of the Capitol Subcommittee unanimously was to do this option, to recommend to the Building Committee this Option D.
Sure.
And if I could just say one other thing, just in hearing from staff and the principal about how critical they feel it is, I think that we should take that into account.
Yes.
I intend to support the plan with the 38 spaces. If we can go back to the previous slide, I think it's essential that those spaces, particularly in the 25-spot segment, can we go back? Yeah, thank you. I think it's, I said it in our previous conversation, but I think that it's essential that those spaces be available for community, for community members with limited mobility, particularly for after-hours and weekend uses. It's important for disability access to be able to like, to be able to have those spaces so that people can use those, that green space outside of school time. I also would like to confirm with you, Helen, that of those 38 spaces, there will be an appropriate number permanently designated for those staff that are moving between buildings, specifically for those language staff that are moving between buildings, those music staffs, so that when they arrive and they need to be able to get to their kids quickly, there's an empty spot that's waiting for them, and that those spaces aren't just going to be allocated, say, for example, for administrators or things like that. I think that that's a really essential consideration because that really informs my vote here.
Well, I think that's in the management of the building, and I would leave that to the principal to determine who gets what spots and how they allocate them, knowing who she has coming and who, and who isn't.
So I think, I think I'm getting a little bit confused as to, so is Option A is parking on site, and Option D is option of parking on site?
No. What we are looking at here and here is Option C plus the 38 spots that you see there.
I think that, I'm a little concerned that there is going, that there will be, that there is confusion over, when you're looking at these, is, this looks like...
We can redo this map for the School Building Committee to make it clear.
But this map, so if the, maybe the rule of the committee is to have, to be giving the Building Committee the option to, the leeway to do either.
No.
But if the intention of the committee, I'm hearing, I mean, Ms. Cotto, well, maybe there is willingness...
Maybe I can explain it better.
Okay. Because this seems...
Because this has to go to the Building Committee and then to the Transportation Committee, okay? And the Transportation Committee, Commission, Board will only vote on the parking spots. They won't vote on what happens in the building. Okay? We vote, we determine what happens in the building because we're the owners.
On the site, yes.
And we give, we can give guidance to the Building Committee and to the Transportation Board. But they will only vote these spots. So we do want them to vote their Option C that Todd says he's going to recommend, which gives the most amount of parking spots. We probably will never use the ones that are further out with having parking on site. But they're there. The school grows, you need it for some reason, they're there. Runcle may need it, because these are closer to Runcle actually than they are even to, in thinking about it, so.
Well, so perhaps, perhaps we could make a motion, maybe we could do away with A and B and C and D, and instead it could be a motion for 38 parking spaces on site with this Transportation Board plan. That is, but D says...
It says that.
Okay.
I wouldn't worry about numbers and letters and that sort of thing, okay? What you want, you know, make, someone make a motion for what you want. I mean, in terms of the parking, on-street parking option, I mean, this is what we are recommending going for, and there are 135 spots in those circles in terms of addressing Ms. Cotto's concern. And we fully tend to make those ones up the hill like the last ones used and optional.
So the motion is for 38 parking spaces on site with a request to Transportation Board for 130 potential street parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we just say at least 130? Is that...
No, it is these 130.
I thought there was a talk that they made, there may be a request for more than this.
No, some of them, the request would be potentially for less.
For less, I see, okay.
So we're hoping to utilize less, but there would be a request for 130.
What they do is they give you the spaces, for instance...
That's cool, we're good.
Good. Okay, so that's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Yes, Jennifer.
I am, I'm a little bit torn. I am in favor of green space. That was a part of the big allure of this project for me, was the green space. We made, we made lots of conversation about the increase in green space. That being said, that the piece of green space around the alley is less desirable and seems more reasonable to have accessibility there for parking. I'm a little more concerned about the 11 spaces abutting the, the, is it like a B or K, yeah, the, oh, 13, I'm sorry, I thought it was 11. The 13 spaces on the right, just because it abuts the...
It doesn't. So just to be clear, the, it's a top-of-the-gym playground. So the playgrounds on the roof will be above the cars, probably, I think, in terms of levels. And then what's below it is not green space. According to the architect today, he was talking about that being a way to get up to the upper playground. So it doesn't, it's not clear to me exactly, but when he was talking about it, it wasn't green as we see it.
I don't agree with your characterization.
All right. So I guess I, okay, so I guess I feel a little bit confused about the total loss of the square footage of green space based on our original plans.
It's roughly 6,000 square.
Including that alley, which we have to keep.
No, no, those are blue, sorry. Just what is, you can decide whether it's good, bad, or otherwise, but the blue is roughly 6,000 square feet.
Do you have people driving through green space? Is that the idea?
No. It's not, you're not access, it's the...
She means if the blue, I think. What you're saying is that if blue is green, then people will be driving through green space.
There are two different ideas.
So that's really just open space and not usable green.
Yeah, there are two different ideas. On the left-hand side, since that abuts a house, one idea there was to plant trees so that it was not like, it's, you're not putting a jungle gym there, it's too small. On the right-hand side, the question was whether there could be benches there, whether there could be, depending on what the fire trucks, the fire trucks need and access there, which they may not, because the fire trucks have access on the top, on the right side, and on the bottom. If they needed access on the fourth side, then you would put benches or some other small green things. If they didn't need access, there was a question from the community about whether or not you could actually sort of put like a roof over the parking so you actually had that entire area as green space, not just the little trip, not just the little blue strip. So, so anyway, so there were lots of conversations about what could be done, that would be trees or environmentally perplantings or environmental benches or other things. That is not, you cannot put a big jungle gym or splash pad there.
You still have like vehicles driving through it so that at least residential neighbors can access whatever it is that they need to access behind their property.
You need to have, you need to have the pathway there.
So whatever that, so it certainly wouldn't be a place where five-year-olds could play.
Okay, so here's, here's my, so do we know what is the total amount of green space that this project will produce, and what percentage increase that is over the current green space? I know that's a lot to ask.
No, 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 we have that in a, we have that in a document from last May.
Right, 107,000 square feet of green space.
Included in this, with this parking.
No, at that point, because at that point, we had an underground garage, and the entranceway to that garage was already here, sorry, was already here.
Let's take up some space.
So it sort of includes some here, and this has also been adjusted because this has been moved. So, I mean, one of the challenges we have right now is that this was, this is a very new concept, okay? We don't, because this has been shifted, all right, as we've, you know, shrunk the, as we, have we sort of, you know, modified the design, this hasn't been, we haven't seen what this really looks like at this point, okay? So, I mean, Susan, and Helen, I don't know if this is appropriate, but, you know, typically what's happened in the past is the Building Committee considers this, they, they make a recommendation, they've been more deeply involved than all of you, from many of you, and that comes here, okay? It's happened in the prior cases. We're having a meeting February 28th, and you need to call me off on this suggestion. It may be valuable for the School Committee to hear, not on the parking part, the other slide, but on this, what the Building Committee, when you're going to...
Well, I guess, well, I would also say that there's a, we've just impaneled, or are about to, or just, impaneled a playground design review committee that may have thoughts on this as well, because they're going to be getting specific recommendations, but they're sending them to the Building Committee also. There are going to be four or five landscape architect meetings with Parks and Rec Commission and with the outside professionals and with Public Process, and they're all in the Driscoll Library, so, over the next three months. So there's a lot more to come on the use of the outdoor space.
But we do need a term from the Transportation Board.
Right, we did need that.
It insists, you know...
We are now past, we are now at 11:05. We have had 30 minutes of conversation about this tonight, and we had previously almost an hour of conversation about this at the last meeting. I'm going to go back to if things are not ready to come to full committee, please do not bring them to full committee. And so...
So Julie, it's not that it's not ready, it's that we disagree.
Okay, and then that's different.
We just disagree.
So then, then we're ready for a vote.
We're ready for a vote.
So that's, I mean, if we're wanting more discussion, if we're wanting to go to other committees, that is a different question. If we just are having a difference of opinion, then it is time to call the vote, which we have a motion and a second on the table. I am not going to withdraw the motion, and so there is a motion, people can vote however they would like to on it, but it, we are going to move forward with the vote.
Just to confirm that the motion is for the 38 parking spaces plus the additional 130 in the community?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So all of those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? All right, so by vote 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, to 2, to 1, that motion passes. Now...
We also have, I have one other small piece, I'm sorry, but we just need to appoint three people to the Design Review Committee for the...
Is that, is there a meeting that is happening between now and our next meeting?
No.
Okay. So is there anything else or any other Subcommittee reports or liaison?
Yes.
Are we talking at the...
Yes, we do need to, yeah, we do need to, why don't you take that one, Susan?
This one's very quick. In the budget for the Driscoll Building Project, there are funds for staff at the Building Department, so Tony Wigley, and there's funds for half FTE at the School Department. And so we need to vote to accept that, or something like that. And so the Build Commission last Tuesday voted to support this position, so I'm happy to make a motion to accept it, and then we can, and then the Select Board votes.
Okay.
So I move that we, I move that we, that we move forward with the half an FTE for the Driscoll Building Project to be funded through the Driscoll override process, not through our operating budget.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Great. All right, all of those, any discussion?
Yes. I disagree. I believe that we...
I believe that we should be directing that half an FTE towards a full-time FTE for an individual with a project management background who can be engaged to address both high school needs and Driscoll needs and pending Pierce needs.
Okay, so just, just one point. We can't fund that through the Driscoll Building Project.
Fair enough.
What we can fund through the Driscoll Building Project is a half an FTE. If you would like to move somewhere else that we find that other half an FTE, that's fine, but this vote is specific around this half of an FTE.
Okay, thank you. Then I would like to vote that we not fund that FTE, and that we create an entire FTE for the purpose of all three of those purposes, which I believe would contribute to our administrative and operational capacity, and that that funding be reallocated to some other aspect of the Driscoll budget.
But this one is already allocated in the budget for the Driscoll School.
Sharon, wait, 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 but the, but the other half of that person could be funded through other means, so we could have, okay. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, we have a second.
All right, all of those in favor? All right, opposed? All right, so by a vote of eight to one, that motion passes. Are there any other Liaison or Committee reports that have met since our last meeting that they would like to have, which was a week ago, that we would like to provide a report on? Okay. Seeing none, we are going...
Superintendent Surge.
Yes, okay.
Superintendent Surge has been interviewing folks. We have interviewed six candidates so far, I think we have one more interview left, which I believe is tomorrow. And we are, we will be discussing after that as a, as a group and coming back with more information.
Great. Then we have any new business? Yes.
I have two items for new business. The first item is that I would like to request that the Superintendent look into communicating with the MASC about convening a training using ASE trainers for all school council members on school council policy and practice. That is one item of new, that is one item of new business. The second item of new business is I would like to request that the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Superintendent place on the agenda, for sometime as is appropriate, a presentation by the Principals to the School Committee on the specific school SIPs, as is recommended or actually as is indicated according to DESI regulations.
Any further new business? All right, so we will, eleven ten, we will be adjourning tonight.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, yeah.